Hello, welcome to today's retreat. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Oh, we have a meeting, okay.
Chair Davis?
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Here.
Treasurer Nardardi? Secretary Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Here.
Trustee Millschain?
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
移到
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we can move on. Moving on to Tab 1, which is the honorary degree recipient process. President Malanca?
I'm gonna turn it over to Vanessa Brooks.
Sorry, I was just turning down my volume so you don't hear my. So just a reminder to trustees, at each commencement, we award an honorary degree. There's a board policy associated with that that's in your file. The past recipients are also listed. So if you have any nominations that you would like to put forward, please fill out the form or text me or let me know. And then the honorary degree committee, which is the President Malanca, Chair Davis, and Secretary Hatcher is your trustee assignment, will meet and figure, and they'll discuss who will be our honorary degree winner. Anybody have any questions?
Is there a deadline?
I believe it's April 4th is on the form. I'm sorry.
The 8th, April 8th.
April 8th, sorry, thank you. Questions or comments? All right, moving on to Tab 2, the fiscal year 2024 through 27 financial forecast.
Need a pen? I have one. Yes, thank you.
Yes, hello.
Maybe a little louder.
How about now? Okay.
Loud and clear, yes.
Okay, today we're going to talk about the forecast over the next three years. Well, first, we're going to talk about the remainder of the current fiscal year, fiscal year 24. Then we'll take a look out over the next three years at what we're expecting in terms of the financials over the next three years. So first, we'll review the budget process itself, what the steps we go through. I'll hit a few of the highlights, some of the main takeaways of the budget. Again, what's our outlook for the remainder of this fiscal year 24? What are our revenue projections over the next three years? What are our expenditure and operating transfer projections over the next three years? And then we'll review our statement of net activities, also known as income statement. So just taking a look at our budget process, our budget managers, which are spread throughout the college, they use a tool that the board approved a couple of years ago called Anaplan. This has been very helpful for us to be very vigilant and monitor the budget very, very well. When we're going through the budget, we can click on, for example, a number, and we can see the history of spending in a particular account over the last several years. So we know historically, do we spend a lot of money in this account? Do we spend a little money? And that, of course, helps us do a more accurate projection going out, which has been very helpful. Most of the departments across the college have achieved a no-budget increase. They challenge themselves, and we challenge them to limit the budget increases for, to things such as software increases that are contractual, other contracts that we have that we know are going to increase. So in most cases, we've limited to that, and I'll highlight things where we have additional expenses later in the presentation. We finalized all the, each department finalized their proposals in February. We then made sure that, from a finance perspective, we can fund everything that, within reason, that people were requesting. We then reviewed that preliminary budget with the President's Office a couple of weeks ago, the week of March 4th, and today, here we are at the retreat. So the next step, this isn't the official budget, this is a preview, again, for all of you of the budget, plus the next two years. But the official budget proposal is in April for subsequent approval, hopefully in May. So what are some of the highlights? We are proposing to maintain a balanced budget in fiscal year 25. We are projecting that credit hours are going to continue to fall by 2% in the first year and then 3% thereafter. And I'm going to show you a chart that explains why, that's our assumption. Now, it is slightly improved from last year. We were projecting 3% a year decline every year last year, so it's a slight improvement. But looking at it this way, we think with this, you're going to see that it's roughly in line with the expected decline in Michigan high school graduates. So we're trying to be good stewards of resources and make sure that our expenditures are in line with those expected revenues, which would decline in line with the credit hours. We are expecting increases in property tax revenues. We are also expecting some modest increases in state aid. That'll help us offset some of the expenditures and capital projects that are upcoming. Again, we have some expenditures rising due to some contractual wage increases, non-contractual wage increases, at software. Increased return to campus, you'll see later in the presentation that more students continue to return to campus, taking face-to-face classes, which is good, and some strategic initiatives. And then there are some proposed capital projects that I'll walk you through that are upcoming over the next three years that would require transfers from the general fund. So first, how do we think the rest of this year is going to turn out? Nothing here should be a surprise. You've heard me talk about this pretty much every month when I present the financials to the board. We've had stronger-than-expected tuition and fees this year. State aid revenues were much stronger than we had expected. And investment income, where the interest rates, as high as they are, have created favorability for our interest revenue as well. We've had personnel expenditures have been less. We've had vacancies longer, that have extended longer than we thought, and also some attrition savings through replacements of personnel. And we've had some timing differences on expenditures, but also some, just some savings that are spread throughout the college. Nothing in particular, but just not every department is spending their entire budget this year. So in total, you'll see there, if you look at the far-right bottom, the revenue less the expenditures and transfers, we're expecting to finish the year with a surplus of approximately $7.9 million. Now, I definitely, just to be clear, I don't want to characterize this as profit. This is not profit. I want to be sure that everyone understands, the reason it's good to have this kind of surplus is, you know, we're living in some good times right now, but we want to make sure that we can continue to fund the college in bad times. So, and that means, for example, you know, we spend several million dollars a year on deferred maintenance activities, keeping the campus maintained. We don't want to stop doing those kinds of things when we get into a bad year or two, right? We want to be able to continue to fund the college even if we hit a rough patch. So it's important to have those excess funds. It helps us with rainy day funds, et cetera. And also the upcoming capital projects, as I mentioned before. So turning our attention to revenues. We are expecting a sizable increase in property tax revenues. We are expecting that the property taxes will increase by at least 5%. You have seen this chart, at least for the past couple of years. This shows you how we're able to predict the minimum property tax increase that we should get. So anytime property values are rising, we're able to use something called the inflation rate multiplier to estimate the property taxes, because that inflation rate multiplier is also used to determine the taxable value of the homes. So you can see here that the inflation rate multiplier for 2024 is 5%. So we're expecting the increase in taxable value and our revenues to go up by at least that 5%. Now, it actually can be a little more with the additional construction that's happening around Ann Arbor in particular, as well as home sales turning over. But this, so it should be probably slightly above 5%, but we're counting on 5%. Going forward, if you look at the history, the average increase every year is about 2.2%, which makes sense, because inflation, the Fed or the Federal Reserve, their target inflation is 2% or less. So as soon as inflation, inflation is already coming under control, as most of you probably know. And as soon as they hit their target of 2%, this increase would go back down to 2%. So just something to keep in mind as you're looking out at '26 and '27, that these sizable increases, like 5%, we've seen over the last couple of years, should be coming to an end. In terms of state aid revenues, we're projecting an increase of 2%. Now, the governor's budget proposal does call for 2.5%. That's the proposal. We've hedged it just a bit, because we know historically, we would generally get about 2%. So we've hedged that slightly. The LCSA, which is also known as the personal property tax, as well as the MIPSers offsets that we get from the state, we don't have a way to accurately predict what those may be. So what we do is, we'll take this year's amounts, and we just hedge it back a little bit in case we get a little less. But if we were to get the 2.5% from the governor's proposal, and if LCSA and MIPSers are in line with this year, that would give us a little bit of upside of over a half a million dollars next year. In terms of tuition revenue, again, projecting a 2% decline. We are hoping and working to utilize several state initiatives to boost our enrollment in the near term. But we do need to be mindful, and I'll show you a chart upcoming of a little bit of a cliff. You're going to see the enrollment is expected to fall off relatively sharply over the next four years or so, if trends continue, and I'll show you that chart in just a moment. And the reason I mention that, too, is when we, with that in mind, knowing that that enrollment could decline, we have to be very mindful of the cost increases that we have. So it's one thing to have a one-time cost increase that we can pay for. It's quite another to have ongoing costs. So we just want to make sure that we limit ongoing costs, because the last thing we would ever want to do is increase costs to a point at which you'd have to take drastic actions to cut those costs. We don't want to end up in that kind of situation, so it's important for us to keep an eye on that. And also, similarly, we want to continue to strengthen the balance sheet. Again, as I mentioned previously, we want to be able to continue to fund maintenance, continue to fund capital. And we also want to be able to hold the tuition for in-district students at $99 as long as we can. And you'll see later that we're still the most economical choice across Michigan, and we want to stay that way as long as we can maintain it. In terms of enrollment trends, the green line on this chart is Washtenaw. The gray line are all the other Michigan community colleges combined. So what you're seeing here is the decline in credit hours. So while we have declined as a college over the last 10 years or so, we have not declined near as much as average community colleges in Michigan. We've, they've in fact declined at a rate almost three times that of Washtenaw's rate. We finished that period with about a 12% decline, whereas the rest of the, the average decline was over 39%. And bear in mind that Washtenaw is included in that average. So if Washtenaw weren't in it, it would be very slightly worse.
Declining trends that we know of?
Yes, I don't have the exact statistics, but this is not a Michigan issue, it's a national issue, where credits and college attendance is declining overall. Depends on the state. Some states, actually, it is increasing, but across, generally, it's decreasing.
It would be interesting to see how dual enrollment numbers have changed and possibly mitigated a problem that's much greater. So I don't expect you to know those numbers right now, but it'd be interesting just to see how much dual enrollment has filled in the actual drop. And I don't know if the state keeps track of dual enrollment numbers for all community colleges, but it'd just be interesting to see how that, what that trend looks like.
Yeah.
And how, what it looks like for WCC.
Yeah. So the next chart here, this is one of the charts that I was referring to earlier. The green line is the same one you saw earlier. It's Washtenaw's enrollment over the past 10 years. The yellow line, or the yellow bars are Michigan high school graduates. So you can see here that there is a pretty incredible correlation between the high school graduates and our enrollment. So in fact, the correlation coefficient is 94%. So we're using this also to predict the future. So you can see here, that dotted line in the middle of the chart, that's the projection. So in the first year, fiscal year 25, you can see that we are being a little conservative. The enrollment team is working to get at least flat enrollment, if not a little bit improved. But we are trying to be a little bit conservative for expenditure purposes. But in terms of the long-term trend, you can see that we're right in line with the long-term trend. If you look at that dotted gray line, we're right in line, and that dotted green line follows those yellow bars pretty, pretty well. So that's why we're forecasting the 3% decline in fiscal year '26 and '27. Now, you may note that there have been some college closures across Michigan over the last few years. Four colleges in Michigan have closed. Another college, or another college or two have announced financial difficulties that you may have seen in the press. So those kinds of things, we, of course, don't want that to happen here, and that's one reason we like to have the rainy day fund. But those college closures could, you know, ultimately impact the colleges that are remaining. So if there are fewer colleges remaining, there are, we could get some help, in other words, from those students that may be coming otherwise from other colleges. And we are also, of course, working to leverage the governor's 60-by-30 programs, as well as all of our online initiatives, to try to mitigate these, this enrollment decline. Face-to-face classes. So as I mentioned earlier, face-to-face classes seem to be making a bit of a comeback. The green area on these bars are face-to-face. The gray area is a mix. So these are students that are taking a mix of face-to-face and online courses. And the yellow area are students that are taking online-only courses. So you can see here that, you know, it's trending back. Now, we don't think it's going to necessarily get back to pre-COVID, when online was a relatively small proportion, but it is, it is coming down. So, but we think it's a good trend overall. It helps, the campus is more vibrant. It does cost a little more, but it's a, it's a very good trend overall for us to have. The next slide shows our tuition revenue projections. The green part at the bottom is the revenues coming from on-campus learning. The yellow is from online learning. And the gray is, we'll get to that in the second presentation. We are proposing, you'll see that we will be proposing a small tuition increase for out-of-district students, not in-district students. So that little sliver is for anyone who's not a Washtenaw County resident. But ultimately, these modes would follow the student demand. So if, if on-campus continues to go up, that green portion would obviously go up. And the slight decline is simply the decline overall in credit hours of 2% to 3% per year. The fee revenue projection is very similar. You'll see here, the infrastructure fee, which is the $15 per credit hour that we charge on our classes, and then contact hour fees is the yellow area. And so again, the trend there is simply following the decrease in credit hours that we're projecting. There's no other impact. We're not projecting any, any real increase in fees or anything of the sort. Here's our overall revenues. So if you look here, this breaks down where we, the college gets all of its revenues. The green portion, you'll see, across the last few years, has been relatively flat. But where our revenues have increased have been in all the other areas. So you can see here, that yellow area gets substantially bigger, which is our property tax revenues, have helped us maintain the tuition at that low level. The gray area is the state aid. The state aid has increased over the last few years, a little bit each year. So you'll see that gray area getting slightly bigger. And then the blue area is all other revenues. So important things that are in that blue area are things like investment income, which we've seen increase, especially over the last two to three years, with interest rates being much higher. Trade partnerships, especially coming out of COVID, have, the trade partnerships have been very impactful to our revenue. So you see that showing up in the blue bar as well. Catering and the conference center have picked up since the Morris Lawrence Building reopened with the renovation. So those kinds of things are also in that blue bar. And again, that little sliver at the top is just the proposal that you'll see later for the additional tuition for non-in-district students. So here's the details. I tried to show you graphically in the previous charts, because it's easier to digest as opposed to a table full of numbers. But this is the detail. You'll see if for, for the tuition and fees, if you look back at fiscal year '20, for example, we, our revenues for tuition was about $32 million. It's still in that general neighborhood. So, you know, we have increased our revenues, but as you saw on the previous chart, it's still relatively flat. So we're not making our revenues off the backs of our students. We're getting the help of the taxpayers and the state and our other initiatives to bring in other revenues. One thing to keep in mind is that, as we keep it flat, the tuition and fees as a percentage of all our revenues get smaller and smaller. So we're less dependent on it, but that means that we are much more dependent on property tax revenues. So that's important to keep in mind, because as I mentioned earlier, we're in a bit of a heyday right now in terms of property tax revenues. But there's a, generally speaking, and historically, there's a recession every seven to eight years. Now, it doesn't always impact home values, like we had a small recession in 2020, but home values were unaffected. It doesn't always impact it, but we shouldn't always count on that, you know? Recession's tend to impact home values, so it's just something to keep in mind. Nothing imminent, we don't see anything on the horizon for the next three years, but just keep that in mind, because we are very dependent on those revenues. So if it contracts, you know, we could have issues. So we just, that's why we're mindful of our costs at all times. This chart is a very interesting chart. This allows you to see how our revenues break down versus all the other community colleges in Michigan. So you can see here, we've ranked it, of course, by tuition and fees. That's the green portion of the bars. The yellow portion represents property tax revenues. The gray portion, state aid. The blue portion, personal property tax, and then other revenues. The other revenues on this chart is slightly different than the one on the previous. The other revenues here also includes things like grants and so forth. But you can see here that we get less tuition and fee revenue than any other college. Our property tax revenues, while, while very healthy on a per-student basis, aren't anything extravagant. You can see wane huge amounts from property tax revenues per student. This is on a per-FYES student. Some of you may know, some of you may not know, just, I should have clarified this at the beginning, but an FYES, or fiscal year equated student, is a full-year student. We take all our credit hours, divide it by 30, which is a full load over a year, and that gives you your, basically, your fiscal year equated student. So these numbers are broken down on a per-student basis, or a per-full-time student basis. But here, again, we're operating with the lowest tuition and fees per student, and also the lowest state aid per student. So in terms of our expenditures, we have the, as I've mentioned, some increases in software. We have a lot of software that there are, generally, it's difficult to avoid some increase in software. We try to limit it by entering multi-year agreements. Usually, we can do things to limit those increases, but we do have them locked in. We have some contractual increases that we've negotiated with our union partners, as well as some non-contractual increases that we're assuming. We've got some increases related to new programs. The board approved recently certain new programs, such as the EV Service Technician Certificate, EV Safety and Fundamental Certificate, and so forth. In terms of transfers, we're expecting the Health and Fitness Center to transfer back in, a million dollars back to the general fund. So this year, we're expecting $750,000. Next year, we're expecting a million dollars to come back. So that gets very close to paying the full bond payment, which is about $1.2 million a year. And when that is paid off, it should be money that the college can utilize for other things. We're also proposing to continue the Technology Infrastructure Improvement Plan. So that's something that has been in place for the last several years, to make sure that our technology stays updated, that we have the infrastructure that we need to make sure that we're always at the vanguard of what students need and what our faculty and staff need. So we've proposed $1.7 million a year to keep investing in our technological infrastructure. And that's the same amount over the next three years. It's also the same amount that we had for this year. And you'll see later, we're proposing some plant fund, transfers to the plant fund to support upcoming capital projects. So in terms of our expenditures and operating transfers overall, again, this is the table. You can see here that personnel costs are going up, again, contractual increases, non-contractual increases. Also, we do have a more conservative assumption in terms of vacancies. We are, for example, working on our recruiting process to make sure that we have a more robust recruiting process and try to fill some of these vacancies that we have. So that, of course, you know, one of the reasons we've had savings over the last couple of years is because of vacancies, and we're trying to fill those vacancies. In terms of non-personnel, again, some planned software increases, license fees, variable cost increases. And when I say variable cost, those are things like our catering operation, which the costs are expected to go up, for example, by $300,000 this coming year. But there are revenues that more than offset that increase in the catering cost.
Them proposing an increase on their catering, or is that us proposing the increase?
No, that, that's, the catering business is basically all ours. In other words, we incur all the costs, we get all the revenue. So that increase in cost is both the increase in food cost, which...
I'm sorry.
The increase in food cost over the last, just only the past year, or the past couple of years, has been 8.8%. Just the food cost. So between the inflation on food, and then we have a lot more people coming. The Morris Lawrence Building has been a lot more booked. So as we have more bookings, we're just spending more. So it's, I would call variable cost is good cost, because it has associated revenues coming with it.
And that will be passed on, then, to the customer?
Yeah, we're working on a proposal right now that we have to review internally, looking at our menu and our costs and pricing for the, for our attendees here at the conference center, yes.
No, that's a business's business, and you have to do what you have to do. But also, too, we don't want to scare them away at the same time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll be mindful of that.
Yeah. Trustee Hatcher?
How do you figure the deferred maintenance line? It goes up and down, and it's about the same for next year, but then it goes up again?
Yeah, so we have a conversation with the facilities team every year, and we look at the projects that they have on the horizon. So generally, it, we are... So generally, it, we are projecting it based on their needs. So in other words, they're actually starting to catch up with their backlog on deferred maintenance. So that's why you see it going down. Now, we could end up increasing that if we want to do, for example, some additional maintenance over the fitness center, we could do something like that. But generally, we align ourselves with what the facilities team says that we need to do.
There might be less maintenance, but it's always more expensive than it was last year. Maintenance, maintenance is always more expensive this year than it was last year. So even if you have fewer projects, it might be more expensive.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair, that's fair. But they, when we go through, they're usually projecting the costs as well as the activities. So we, we do align ourselves that way. As I mentioned earlier, I like to keep it as stable as I can. So I don't want to, so this, the reduction is not based on, hey, I need to cut your costs by a million dollars because we don't have the money to fund it. It's, it's based on their needs. Because I don't want to get into a situation where we're cutting because we don't have the funds. That only increases our costs down the road.
I'd like to piggyback on that if it goes correlated together as utilities. Because I'm looking at the figure from 24, I mean 20, well, budget right now at, of the utilities of 2881 and the forecast of 24 is 2875. So you're looking at less usage of, you know, what's going on in each building or just overall, or is it all overall?
So what we do is, we work with the facility team. They look at the rate. So what are the, is the water rate going up? Is the electricity rate going up or down, gas rates? So we look at the rates. We also look at the trends in usage to see if, in some cases, because we're installing LEDs across the campus, in some cases, usage is going down in some, in some buildings because of electricity. Water usage, or the rate for water has gone up, but usage has not gone up as much. And for gas, there was a small rate increase, but we've actually reduced consumption of gas. So, you know, even though sometimes we have rate increases, we try to offset that with, with usage. And the facilities team does a good job of, of trying to leverage tools to, to bring down utility usage and make sure that we're not, that our equipment isn't inefficiently used. So.
I know years ago, there was an agreement with, between the college and DTE. Is that agreement still going on?
Yes, we have a special rate, I think it's called the educational rate, but we do have that in place, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Russell DeBarty?
On the utility use in addition to that educational rate, a couple of years ago, when the previous CFO was here, I think we entered into an agreement with DTE for green energy.
Yes.
That was a contractual benefit to us, it seemed at the time. So that's another aspect that we can potentially grow in the, in our relationship with DTE.
Yeah, that, our, our user, it's called My Green Power, and the contract increases our utilization of green technologies each and every year up to 2030. So that's built into our forecast as well. So what are some of the non-personnel cost increases that we're expecting? In particular, in the coming year, we're looking at a website refresh. So you'll see a presentation of that in the coming months. But our websites, you know, we, we did a bit of a study or we had a study done. And you'll see that it's, you know, they noted, you know, it's a bit stale and we can go into more detail about that. But a complete revamp of a website is not cheap. So it's one of the things that we're going to be looking at. We've got some equipment maintenance, in particular, in the welding area that needs to be maintained. So we've got that built in. The variable cost increase I mentioned before, the contractual increases I've mentioned. And we do have some contingencies because we were going to do a campus master plan this year. We're probably not going to get to it this year. So we've put it in as a contingency for next year. And we're also looking at an online proctoring service. We, we have one currently that we're not completely satisfied with. So we're looking at a different product that we might utilize going forward. But again, that would be another presentation to the board in the future if that were to come to pass.
Could you explain why we did not do the campus master plan this year?
Yeah, we're, we're currently, you're talking about the space utilization study? Are you referring to the space utilization?
Right, campus master, yes.
So we, the first step, before we do a campus master plan, we want to do a space utilization study. So we issued an RFP to do the space utilization study. And the first round, we got no bidders because there's so many campuses and businesses that are also doing space utilization studies that they seem to not really have time to do it. They didn't, they, we got letters back saying they didn't have the capacity. So we also talked to a couple that, that said they might be able to do it with certain adjustments. So we, we asked them, well, what were they looking for? What, what in our proposal couldn't they meet? So we made some minor adjustments to the proposals, but we did get back three recently. So we're currently evaluating those proposals to do the study. Hopefully we'll have something wrapped up in April. And then from there, it'll take us a few months to get the study done because of course it's a, it's an effort between many different areas and many, many different parties to, for their vision of how space should, should be utilized. So hopefully around August, September timeframe, we would have that done. And then that would be a feeder into the campus master plan.
Who was the company that we had, the, the first round? Terry, I don't think VP Barnes was here then, was he?
No. Julie, what was the name of that company? Yes. Albert Con.
Albert Con, were they, they were one of the companies that said that they couldn't help out this year, perhaps next year?
Well, that's the master plan. What we're doing right now is the space utilization study.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, some companies.
I, I thought they were all one in the same, so.
Some companies do both, others specialize in one or the other, so.
All right, let me continue.
So again, I wanted to show you where our operating costs fall relative to all the other community colleges in Michigan. Again, this is based on FYES. So similarly to the, to the previous chart where we broke it down by FYES. So you can see here, we spend about $14,000 per student at Washtenaw. So pretty much right in line with Oakland, which would be a, a school of our approximate size. But you can also see here that our costs are relatively low. Another reason that we're able to keep our tuition low and we use our taxpayer dollars wisely. We, we're trying to make sure that our costs, we always keep a watchful eye on those costs. So wanted to show you that, that we are among the best performers there. And this is despite the fact that Washtenaw, and I'll show you this in the next slide, but Washtenaw County, as most of you probably know, is the single most expensive county in Michigan. So we've achieved this relatively low cost, being in the highest cost county in the state. So here, you go ahead.
I just want to put it, is it something I was thinking about? Every time I'm on my Board of Directors meeting or Legislative Committee meeting with MCCA, we always talk about not so much the individual counties, but the presidents, and I think, believe Dr. Belanca can attune to what I'm getting ready to say, is other, and I may have said this before, but other counties literally are struggling. And it's, it's really a situation that it looks like they're getting a lot of money from the, from the state, but they're really trying to catch up to, not to our school, but from what they don't have. And one school I know in particular has lost almost 50% of their student population. So there's, I mean, they're really grabbing at straws. So I just want to let people know this because we are really doing not just what the data says, but we really are doing well, one, because of our taxpayers. That could change at any minute with us. But hopefully with this new millage, it's getting ready to come off in a few years, that we'll still be able to maintain without relying so much on the state, even though we need to rely on the state. But there's many, many other community colleges that are, may not make it, as you mentioned before. And I hear this, I just heard it last week again because of something's coming through the pipeline with the governor. And they're really afraid that it's either one way or the other. And for them, one way is that they get the money and this proposal that is being proposed through the, the state will not go through. And so, you know, our, our president of the association, she's, she's been to Lansing and spoke about the dire need of having something consistent with each of the schools. And I hope I'm saying this correctly, Dr. Belanca, that, that everyone can come out ahead and not fall behind because they're already behind. Thank you for bringing this to the light.
Sure.
Trustee DeBarty?
As I look at this, one thing that I'm thinking is by maintaining our enrollment level or by minimizing the drop in enrollment or even growing it, we're, because these are per student, you know, it's like for full-time students. So these rates are, are fixed costs for operating the college are amortized, amortized across more students, which is beneficial. And I think that some of these counties that the costs are much higher per student, it may be because they're, those are colleges where they're seeing the enrollment declines. So their fixed, significant enrollment declines. So their fixed costs are amortized over fewer students, which raises this green bar.
Yes.
So that's one thing I'm recognizing as I look at this. And another reason why we want to invest in maintaining a strong student enrollment so that we can keep our, our green bar down here low on the list.
Yes, it, it is worth noting, you know, this, I don't have the breakdown between what's fixed and what's variable. Some of this cost will be variable, some of it will be fixed. But at colleges, a large portion will be fixed. So you're, you're not wrong, a large portion would be fixed.
And, and I appreciate what you said because I'll say this, Jackson College is one. Lansing Community College is another. The ones, Glen Oaks, I can, Elpina, I can go through a lot of these schools that they are in a, on a brink. So I just say thank God, that we're doing fine. We have a giving community that is supportive of this institution.
Very good.
What else?
So just briefly, I just wanted to show you the cost of living in Michigan. You can see here Washtenaw County is at the top, above Oakland County. So this just basically measures the household costs. So you could, we've listed here the household costs that go into the number. But we just thought that that was interesting, adds some interesting perspective. So what are the potential capital projects that we have? So if you look over at the right-hand side of the chart, we have the Student Center HVAC, which you've heard about here and there over the last few years. That should start getting some real traction, I would say, over the, the next several months. So we're right now estimating that at 12.5 million. We're working with facilities to refine that number. We don't know that number exactly, so that is an estimate at this point. Similarly, for the Student Center front entrance, again, it's an estimate. We've, we've set aside $5 million in the plan for that. The Health and Fitness Center upgrade, that's a placeholder. We don't have additional information yet. But of course, based on the presentation last month, we are looking and, at a strategic plan and we'll have something built in there. So we've just put that in as a placeholder for now, knowing that locker rooms alone were well in excess of a million dollars.
May I ask you?
It has to, not so much with the locker rooms, but about the, some of the other issues that's going on, for me. I haven't been there in a while, but handrails in the exercise room, lower handrails in the exercise room for the seniors. I, I think that, I've mentioned this before in the past, but I think it's really essential that they have this. And the water temperature in the whirlpool for the seniors too. I don't know, I don't know how you're able to regulate that. But that's just some of the ideas.
High or too low?
Too high.
Too high. Okay, I've made a note. We'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
In terms of the, continuing down the list, the green fund, we've got 1.1 million for the green fund. We've, again, aligned ourselves with the facilities team. This is for EV infrastructure. It's for continued purchases of EVs on campus to replace the internal combustion engines that we have. Electric vehicle battery testing lab. Most of this expense was covered by a grant or a, from the, from the federal government, but we've set aside a million dollars for anything that we may have to do for, to help with that installation. The next line is master plan initiatives. Now, this is just, again, a placeholder number. We don't know what this would be. But once we have the space utilization study and then once we have the master plan, we would assume that that would require some kind of investment. So we don't know what that is right now. But we're setting aside some money, knowing that there will be plans that come out of that and we want to be prepared and not caught off guard with those, with that funding. And then generally, just a contingency, again, basically it's a million dollars a year over the next three years. So $3 million just for stuff that we don't know. You know, things will come up that we didn't plan for, just like the sanitary pipe, the sanitary main that happened a year or so ago that was unforeseen. Things like that happen. We want to be sure that we have contingencies anticipating such events. So in total, you can see there $30 million through 2027. The current, with, with the current planned transfer this year, we currently would have at the end of the fiscal year about $16.6 million in the plant fund toward that $30 million. So here's the income statement. If you look at the blue section, that's the forecast, those are the forecasted numbers. And if you look toward the very bottom, you'll see in fiscal year 25, the budget is balanced. There's slight negatives in the out years based on some enrollment declines and so forth. But those are by no means insurmountable. I'm absolutely certain we can find that kind of money as we plan through the next year or so going out. So that's where, what the income statement looks like. In terms of our cash, so to help you understand what this, what, what are you seeing in this chart? The green area represents the amount that we have invested in long-term bonds. The yellow portion is our cash and working capital. So this is the money that we use on a day-to-day. So this is the money that we use on a day-to-day basis to pay payroll, vendors and so forth. So the peaks you see there, that's usually when we get, uh, most of our property tax revenues. And you'll see we spend that property tax revenue down throughout the year. One of the things important on this chart is you'll see that the difference between the top of that green line and the troughs above is pretty wide. Meaning, we don't, we, we don't foresee a need to have to sell any bonds for any reason in the foreseeable future. It would also suggest that we have room to invest even a little more in long-term bonds to take advantage of the current relatively high interest rates so that we can continue to get some of the, enjoy some of the interest revenue we've had over the last two or three years. The next chart just shows you how our, uh, bonds are allocated. So we follow a, a, a pretty common process in finance called laddering. So basically, laddering is just, uh, staggering your maturities. So each and every year, you have some bonds maturing and that allows you to diversify your interest rate risk. So whatever bonds mature this year, I'll go out and we'll buy bonds at the current interest rate. And, uh, next year, the same, whatever the interest rates are prevailing at the time. The good thing about, one of the good things about doing it is, well, you, obviously you have liquidity coming in every year. Uh, and the other thing is you don't lock yourself into one interest rate that may be good, may be bad, uh, for a significant period of time. Our unrestricted and unallocated net position, also known as, I guess, our reserve or our rainy day fund, uh, we started this year with fifty-one million dollars. Uh, the surplus, as you saw earlier, is expected to be around seven point nine million dollars. That would leave us with an ending balance of fifty-nine million dollars, uh, in rainy day funds. If you take away, so that's the reserve, the fifty-nine million dollars. That's the important number here. Uh, we subtract the long-term investments, just saying, hey, we'd prefer not to, to have to touch those long-term investments unless we need to. Uh, so that would leave us with a remaining balance of around twenty-two million dollars. But just so that you know, uh, fifty-nine million dollars is enough to support the operations for roughly six months, which is a, a very good, healthy reserve for a public institution. So that's, um, that's the first presentation.
Any other questions, comments, further discussions? Trustee Hatcher?
Um, I'm just grateful for a finance office that knows how to add and subtract.
In Washtenaw County. Thank you.
Does anyone need a break? A quick couple-minute break? Are we good? Go on to tab three then? All right, well, we'll proceed to tab three, which is the tuition and fee rate discussion.
Okay, um, so tuition and fees. Um, so per the memo down at the bottom of the slide, this is the full-time semester cost for an in-district student. So the, the green line on the chart is that cost for a Washtenaw, um, student and the yellow line is the Michigan Community College average. So over the period, Washtenaw has increased its tuition by fifteen percent over that, over that period. Whereas the average community college in Michigan has increased by forty-five percent. So, uh, triple that of WCC. I would note too, that inflation over this same period has been approximately thirty percent. Uh, some of you may know, there's a, an economic concept called constant dollars, which basically adjusts for inflation. So what that means is, in terms of someone's purchasing power, uh, college is fifteen percent more affordable here now than it was ten years ago. So the next slide again is the full-time semester cost for an in-district student. This is the increase. This isn't the absolute cost, this is just the increase. Um, so we've increased our prices over this period by two hundred and forty dollars. Um, again, that's full-time cost. Uh, the only, the only college that's increased less over the period, uh, was Wayne, uh, who also has a very sizable, uh, property tax revenue base, which has allowed them also to be very competitive. Um, but again, we've, we've tried to keep those increases to a minimum, as all of you well know. But the highest increase here, uh, Muskegon, in terms of percentages, was seventy-five percent is how much they've increased over that, over that period. So the next slide and the next several slides just compares our tuition by residency. So this first slide is our in-district students. On the left-hand, you'll see the tuition, then fees that are paid for face-to-face classes. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the, the tuition and fees paid for online classes. So again, at ninety-nine dollars on the left-hand side, you'll see that we have the, the cheapest tuition. And even when you add fees, the cheapest tuition and fees are the most economical tuition and fees, um, in the state. Uh, the online tuition rate slightly higher, uh, but it's been positioned that way for, for several years. But again, very, very affordable for those, uh, students that choose that. I would note here too, that sixty, sixty-two percent of our face-to-face students are in district. Um, and thirty-eight percent of our in-district students are online. In terms of our out-of-district tuition, uh, here at one seventy-six, uh, we are the second most economical choice, uh, next to Wayne Community College, Wayne County Community College. And our online tuition rate is the lowest in the state at one twenty-five. So we're very competitive in terms of anyone who may not have a, a community college next door. Uh, they can always come to Washtenaw at a very competitive rate.
I, I'm sorry I didn't ask you this when we went over these things earlier, or yesterday. The, I'm, I'd be interested in looking, just because I think of our online offerings as being competitive beyond our district. And that, uh, seeing what our on, online costs, out-of-district online costs are on a chart that would include all, for all the other colleges, their in-district online costs. So that gives, would give me a sense of where we sit competitively with getting people in other districts throughout the state to, um, come to our online programs as opposed to the online programs they may be offered in their own districts.
Yes.
It also may, uh, point us to districts that we could target for advertising our online opportunities to bring online registrations from districts that are significantly higher for students that want to do online learning. Um, so that, that was, I thought about this after we left our meeting yesterday, that, oh, that's a, that's a chart I'd like to see. Um, and probably you're already thinking about that.
I actually have that chart. Uh, I don't have it here on this, in this deck, but I do have that chart. We do, that is something we look at regularly. Uh, I would, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but if you look at our online rates, there's only maybe a half a dozen colleges that their in-district rate is cheaper than our online rates out of district. So in other words, most of our, in most cases, our online rates are competitive with or better than most other colleges in district rates.
So I'm hoping that our marketing department can see that so that they can target districts that are significantly out of line for potential cable advertising or something to reach out, depending on how much population might be in those districts. Uh, might be a, a way to bring, uh, to another effort to grow our tuition or to replace loss, or to grow our enrollment.
Yes. Yes. Good comment.
We'll get you that chart though, if you'd like to see it.
I trust that they have it and they're using it.
He does, I know he does.
But it would be, I'd like our marketing department to have it as well.
Will do.
Thank you. I just want to say, that's one of the, uh, issues that we discussed in our meeting, uh, at, uh, MCCA on Friday, is marketing out of district. And, uh, and people are doing it now. And so, you know, because of their low enrollment.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of our out-of-state tuition, um, we get about, uh, five percent of all our students are actually out-of-state students. Uh, our rate for face-to-face is two forty-nine. Again, we have the most competitive, um, out-of-state tuition among all the community colleges. Uh, and ten percent of all of our online students are out-of-state. And then finally, our international tuition, uh, still quite competitive. Uh, not, again, not the cheapest for face-to-face classes. We do get quite a few international students from schools such as University of Michigan in the summer, or people that are returned home because they live in Ann Arbor and they take a few classes in the summer. Uh, or actually, these are international, my, but that, that comment was not relevant for this. But, uh, but still a very competitive rate. Uh, there's a pretty big gap for us. If you look in the online, the one thirty-eight versus the next, um, uh, most competitive rate at one fifty-eight, there's a pretty big gap there that we're going to try to cover a little bit of. So the proposal you'll see in a minute does cover that gap a little bit more, but still keeps us at the most competitive position.
Why is the face-to-face so much higher than the online for an international student? What's the rationale behind it? Because it, it doesn't seem like with the other categories, it's as big of a difference.
Well, there's a couple of rationales. One, we take into account the funding that we get. So we get more funding for an in-district. Then we get state funding, which helps with out-of-district. And then there's federal funding that helps with out-of-state. But for international students, there's no funding, right? They're, they're paying the whole thing, including the lights, the, the rooms, the air conditioning, everything. Um, for an online student, one is, that's how we want to position ourselves competitively. But two, you can expand the classroom, you know, we, we limit it to usually about thirty students, but in theory, you, it can be somewhat unlimited, right? Because you don't, I don't need a bigger room to accommodate more students. This is all online. So it doesn't drive a ton of incremental cost when you add online students. Whereas if you have a face-to-face class, it will drive incremental cost.
Have we ever considered some programs, so changing that online fee, uh, or online, uh, cost based on the program? So if we have a, so for example, esports, probably a program that's very difficult to, very few colleges offer something like that. And if we're able to do that online, have we considered a premium for some of those programs where we have less competition? And a standard rate or a lower rate for, uh, courses where we have, uh, more competition?
I don't know, there, maybe someone who's better, can better answer that than me. I, I haven't looked at it. We, I know that a few years ago, we did, the college did consider, uh, high-cost programs. They did consider having a differentiated tuition based on high-cost programs. Um, we haven't considered it based on just competition alone as of yet.
I think that would be a wise thing to consider, just, um, you know, I think we have some pretty unique programs that are not just unique to the state, but also to the country and potentially also international. So it'd be something that'd be interesting to take a look at, to see if that, um, just to see what the outcomes might be based on some of those increases, based on our competition.
We'll look into that and get back with you.
Trustee DeVarty?
I want to agree with my fellow trustee on that issue. For example, um, we've invested a lot of money into a welding, our welding program and facilities. And we have such a strong program in terms of regionality that I think it draws people from, or I, now people coming from out-of-district or out-of-state are going to pay a higher tuition rate already. And I don't know if we do any online stuff with welding because that's a relatively, or has to be hands-on. But that's the kind of program that tuition rates, although unless there's fee, added fees. So there are added fees to cover those costs. But there may be other areas that we have regional strength in terms of people throughout the region, not just in our district or our state, that might be, um, good to look at with, uh, at what Alex is suggesting.
We can look at that.
To add a little bit more onto that, I know several families who, uh, don't live in the area. Some of them, they live across the country. They want their kids to go to U of M and they're utilizing our transfer program here.
Mm-hmm.
That, I think that's an area that we might be able to, um, to raise fees. You know, I'm all a hundred percent on board for keeping the fees for in-district, um, students as low as possible. But I think for some of those other areas, I think there are people in the country who are taking advantage of our low online fees. Um, and I think it's something that we need to take a look at.
Are you saying in-district would be lower and out-of-district will be higher for the same program?
Or, yes.
Oh, and you're done? No, I'll wait.
What I'm saying is, for example, um, to, just one example, we're a family that lives on the West Coast. They're, uh, so they live in California. They want their, uh, their, uh, son to enter into U of M. And so they're utilizing our transfer program, um, that we have here. Um, and they're paying the same rate that they would for any other out-of-state student. But I feel like that's a program that's popular for out-of-state. And there may be other programs that are very popular for out-of-state students, um, that they would probably pay more because of the popularity of it, because it's so competitive. There's no other community college that has a transfer program that's like ours to get into U of M. Same with, you know, our welding program, for example. I don't know if any of it can be done online, but there may be some students out of state that should probably be paying more because of the popularity and because there's very low comp, uh, competition of other colleges offering the same programs.
Outside of, what I'm hearing you say is, it's just, uh, a general type of programs that they're enrolled in that should be higher, not just a welding, you know, occupational, but more into the regular programs.
Uh, potentially, just depending on, on the competition and what our student, yeah, I would say it's competition and what's popular today.
Yeah.
Well, excuse me if I, I just, from, for me, I see it's, it's a double-edged sword. The ones who can afford it, that's fine. But what about the ones who cannot afford it? And they still want to get into this program based on where they're going and what they would need to do to have this program. And it could eliminate them, you know, without having any, um, what I want to say, uh, alternative, because the, the price will be fixed versus the ones who can't afford it.
No, this is a great discussion. Um, and there is a strategy that we actually have. And, um, I'm so grateful that we're videotaped. Uh, but because everything's kind of competitive, we really don't discuss our strategy aloud. But I'd be very happy to discuss that with anyone who'd like to talk about it afterwards. Does that, okay? Okay, thank you. I mean, marketing strategy and pricing strategy. I mean, marketing strategy and pricing strategy.
It's, it's an interesting suggestion, especially for generating funds. But I think once we start saying that, um, the elect, the UV, EV program is more difficult than Shakespeare. So people should pay more for EV than Shakespeare. It's a slippery slope, because once you start paying more for EV, then you might want to pay the instructor more for EV than the instructor who's doing Shakespeare. And it opens a can of worms, is all I'm saying. So a credit is a credit is a credit, is something we've lived with for a long time. And before we change that, we need to look at all the implications.
Agreed.
These are very good conversations.
In terms of our non-course fees, here's a list of the fees charged by all the community colleges in Michigan. You can see that we are among the most competitive here at $15 a credit hour. Not only are we among the most competitive, we also only have the one fee. We have an infrastructure fee. You can see others may have three or four fees, a different fee. So part of the philosophy is keeping the fee low, but the other part of the philosophy is just limiting the number of fees. I know, I know I'm frustrated if I get a bill for something, and on top of the base price, they've tacked on four fees. I get a little irritated. So we try to avoid that, so. This is the year-over-year increase by all the community colleges last year. So this is the increase in tuition and fees. Every single college in Michigan increased their tuition last year, all of them. Half of the colleges also increased their fees last year. We increased our tuition by $4 last year. Took it from $95 to $99. But even at $4, ours was among the lowest increases in the state. You can see it varied from anywhere from $1 to $13. But again, everybody had to increase last year. These are the confirmed tuition increases for Fall '24. So these are the schools that their Board of Trustees has already approved tuition increases for the coming year, for in-district cost per credit hour. So you can see here, anything from about $2 to $6 are the increases so far. So far, no one, and no college has announced that they're maintaining their in-district tuition. These are the ones we know about, and all of them have published increases. So what is our recommendation after seeing the, the finances and the previous charts? As expected, we are not proposing any increase in tuition for our in-district students. You could see that our property tax revenues are sufficient to help us, or continue to support our in-district students with very economical tuition rates. We are proposing to increase our non-in-district tuition. We're proposing a 3% increase to face-to-face, and approximately 2% to 3% for our online rates. With that international rate going up quite a bit, you saw there was a pretty big gap there, so we are increasing that a bit more for international online. This will help us compensate for some inflationary costs, some contractual costs, and so forth for these out-of-district or non-in-district students. If this ra, if this increase were to be approved, you can see the impact for each of those residencies in total. This would generate incremental revenue of about $450,000. And the increase, depending on the mode and individual residency, would be anywhere from $3, or anywhere from $0 for in-district, to $11 for that online international rate. In terms of fees, we are not proposing any increase in our infrastructure fee. We do have a few select course fees that we wanted to discuss with you. One is the art model fee. This fee has not been changed since 2007. We have been charging a fee of $15. We're proposing to increase that to $50. Prices have, of course, risen since 2007, and in particular, since COVID, they've risen about 79%. So our current fee, the $15, only pays for about 19% of the cost. Even increasing it to 50 won't cover the whole cost, but we thought it was a, a good increase to cover most of the cost. We're also proposing an increase in the ceramics fee, from $40 to $60. Again, this fee has not changed since 2007. The current fee covers about 62% of the cost of ceramic supplies. In addition, I know the ceramics staff or faculty, they do recycle as much of the clay as they can to keep costs low, and to keep the student costs low as well. And finally, we have a couple of increases proposed for the Police Academy. In particular, the, the price of ammunition and targets and so forth, in particular ammunition has, the prices increased substantially. And in order to cover that increase in cost, we would need to increase the fee there from $600 to $975. And bear in mind that most of the students here are coming from agencies. The vast majority are, are not individuals, paying their own way. And if, and the increase to the firearms range fee, the increase to cost and repair the range and so forth has increased a bit, so we're also proposing to increase that, so that we're not taking a loss on, on, on these range fees. Other than these four fees, we're proposing to keep every other fee exactly the same as it is today.
Saying that the Police Academy cadets, these are not out-of-pocket expenses? The majority of them are covered by agencies they're coming from?
Correct. I mean, there are the occasional students. We do have a handful of students that do pay their own way, but the vast majority of students, at least nowadays, are, come from agencies. There's a severe shortage in police officers, so agencies are, are funding in most cases.
Trustee Hatcher?
Can I go back a minute to the international fee increase? Is, the significant increase is for out-of-district, online, international? Go back one more.
This one? Sorry, which, this slide?
Where's the?
You, the increases are in the third column on this slide?
Yeah. But this, it's for distance learning. The internet, the big jump for international students is for distance learning.
Correct.
Right?
Yes. It's for distance learning. Yes, correct.
I, I just wanted to state publicly that since most of the Police Academy students are being brought in by agencies, some from other governmental entities that have budgets, or maybe getting federal grants for increasing their police, or training new police, that I would not want us to be subsidizing the cost of the training for these other units of government. They should be paying the full way, their full freight for that. And I think if there's any, if we're not getting the full coverage of all of our costs, we need to increase by more than this. So that's something I encourage us to look at with the cost of running the Police Academy, recognizing that, in most cases, these are the other taxing units of government that are paying those costs. And I don't think we should be subsidizing those other government units.
Are we subsidizing?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, but I think that's the question. Are we doing it?
Well, it certainly costs more than that.
Yeah.
To go to the academies.
Yeah, these are the, just the two fees. I know these two fees in particular are covering the cost of the supplies. So we're not subsidizing the cost of the supplies. We need to look at the cost of the actual academy, look at our costs, compare it to what other community colleges are charging as well, just to make sure that, all in all, we're covering costs, but also are competitive with other colleges.
Yeah. Good point.
There are alternatives to us? If my police chief thinks that we're too expensive, can he send me to Livonia?
Yes, there are, there are alternatives. We are not the only game in town. Yes.
That's a good point.
What else?
Specifically, also, trustee, Wayne County, they have a really good program down there, too. So they don't have to be here. Okay?
Good to know.
That concludes my presentations. If, if there's no more questions.
You.
Very, very good, detailed.
Thank you. There you go. Done with the retreat. You gotta read that for the next meeting.
This concludes the, you know, I can't hear you, I'm sorry. Because I keep moving my mic. So when I bend down, my hair gets in it, that's why. This concludes the retreat at this time. The actual board meeting will begin at 6 o'clock, so we can take a break.
Need a motion to adjourn the retreat? I'll so move.
Second.
Would that second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.